Good evening, friends. Thank you for coming tonight to our unique annual town meeting. My name is Chelsea Summers. It's my pleasure to serve you as your town clerk. Before we start and open the meeting this evening, the Chair of the Select Board, Walter Wrights, is going to say a few words.
Thanks, Chelsea. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, I don't even know if these people are in the room, but I have some acknowledgements and thanks that I'd like you to join me in. For nine and 12 years respectively, we have benefited greatly from a dynamic sister act on our Budget Committee. Donna Withington and Gail Galant have served us well with their dedication, intelligence, knowledge, and passionate commitment to our town. I am one of many who have learned much from them, been challenged by them on more than one occasion, and am better in my public role for having been their colleague. So please join me in thanking Donna and Gail, in wishing them the best in the years ahead. And I know that each will be a resource to future Budget Committee members should they need wise counsel from these wonderful neighbors. Donna and Gail, thank you so much. Donna and Gail, thank you so much. The 2019 Town Report is dedicated to Cheryl Waterman. We almost needed two pages to adequately document her many services to the town. It is clear that had she not spent so much time away in service to our country, that two or more pages would have been necessary. Need an outhouse at the demo dump? Cheryl's there. Need a front-end loader to create a town garden? Cheryl is there. Need to chair an ambulance futures committee, a town office building committee, or the shellfish alliance? Cheryl is there. Need a fellow Select Board member to pour the cold water of reality on your poorly thought-out plans? Cheryl will jump right in. So Cheryl, enjoy your well-earned break from public life, but we know better than to say goodbye. Only see you later whenever the need arises.
So let's officially call this meeting to order. To Gerald E. Greerson Sr., resident of the Town of South Thomaston in the County of Knox, State of Maine, in the name of the State of Maine, you are hereby required to notify and warn the voters of the Town of South Thomaston in said county, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet at the Knox County Regional Airport in Owl's Head on Tuesday, the 30th day of June 2020, at 7:00 PM, then and there to act on Articles numbered 1 through 29, all of said articles being set out below to wit. And we're going to start with Article 1, which is to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. And I will now open the floor to nominations.
I nominate Mike Mayo.
A nomination has been made for Michael Mayo. Do I have a second?
A second.
Hearing no more nominations, they will cease. Those wishing to cast a ballot, please do so now. And with four cast ballots and four votes, Michael Mayo has been elected moderator for said town meeting. Michael, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you, Michael Mayo, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as you shall continue a citizen thereof?
I do.
And do you, Michael Mayo, swear that you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent upon you as moderator in this meeting according to the Constitution and laws of this state?
I do.
Thank you. I'll hand the meeting over to you now.
I can't even see it right there.
Yep. Perfect. Well done. Thank you.
There are a few more seats down front for people in the back. At least five of them, six of them down here.
On behalf of the citizens of South Thomaston, I would like to welcome you to tonight's annual town meeting. This is unusual circumstances for all of us. I think this is going to make it more necessary that you show the usual South Thomaston good cheer and comfort with each other, and make sure that we maintain good civil discipline at the meeting tonight. This is a public meeting. It is open to all to attend, but only registered voters of the Town of Thomaston may speak or vote. If somebody wishes to speak who is not a member of the town, the town may vote to give them permission to speak. Is there anybody here present who is not a registered voter of the Town of South Thomaston? Okay? If it...
Okay, yes.
If at any point you wish to speak, you need to be recognized by the Chair and the body gets to vote to give you permission. I would like to start with, first off, giving permission for the Town Secretary, now clerk, excuse me, and Mr. Cassas to speak. Would somebody like to make that into a motion?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? Is there any discussion about allowing them to speak? Okay, all those in favor of allowing them to speak, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. We do have some other distinguished guests here tonight.
Any opposed?
Oh, excuse me, that's right. Is anybody opposed to that motion? Okay, it passes with nobody opposed. We do have some other distinguished guests here tonight who may be interested in speaking at some point. Representative Matlack is here, and I'm wondering if Senator Miermont is present. They may wish to speak at some point, or anybody else, you simply raise your hand and ask to be given permission. We're going to be conducting tonight's meeting according to the Maine Moderator's Manual, the sixth edition. If you wish to address the body, please stand or raise your hand and wait until you are recognized by the moderator. I would ask that all remarks be germane to the subject at hand and remind everybody in South Thomaston tradition that we conduct ourselves in a civil manner, and there will be no crude, rude, or profane remarks allowed in this meeting. Does anybody have any questions of a procedural nature before we begin the rest of tonight's meeting? Okay, I'm going to have to lower my mask a little bit because I need these things to read the warrant, being old, and they steam up if I don't do this. Okay, we'll now go to the warrant. Oh, they're still steaming up. It's just too hot down here. I think I'm going to sit down and try to read this. Okay, this Article Number 2 is to elect by written ballot one Select Board Member, one Assessor, and one Overseer of the Poor for the term until the town meeting in 2023. Now, is there anybody who would like to make any remarks in regards to this article? Yes?
I'd just remind everybody that nobody is on the ballot because they didn't take out papers, so it has to be a write-in. I personally am writing for John Spear. I've been elected before, and he's willing to serve again.
Okay, thank you. I would like to remind people that if you want to project your voice, you can go to the microphone right here in front of us, and that will be turned on for you. Is there anybody else that would like to address Article Number 2? Okay, I see several people. Yes, the lady in the row back there, Penny.
I also will be writing for John Spear, and I have that knowledge, experience, perseverance, and patience in my service in this town on board as a municipal chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir, the gentleman in the middle.
I'm Andrew Stanshaw from Sprucehead, and I would like to suggest the name of Cliff Ratzloff as a potential Member of the Select Board, and I would like to ask you to allow him to say a few words so that everybody can get to know why he wants to be a member.
Okay. Would the individual... I don't happen to know the individual you're talking about, but I assume that person is here, and would they please come down to the mic down here to say a few words?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
I don't know that. Did you know this person? Okay.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
I'm so glad we can all meet in person, although these circumstances are so unique. I was going to hand out something to everybody, but in the interest of the panedemic, I'm going to just read it if you don't mind.
Yes, get close to the mic so they can hear you in the back.
Close to the mic, okay. I know that tonight Andrew is going to nominate and put my name in for position as Select Board, so who am I? My name is Cliff Ratzloff. I live at 28 McBride, which is on beautiful Sprucehead Island. Sandy and myself fell in love with Maine and the midcoast on our honeymoon. The beautiful shoreline, the ocean, the tranquil fishing village setting resulted in our buying our house 15-plus years ago, remodeling it, and permanently moving to Maine three years ago. My interest in being on the Select Board is to retain all that we have that we have here, that we've fallen in love with in this beautiful place. This year I was on the Budget Committee, which really gets you plugged into the community. While we, our community, are doing a lot of things, I believe we need to create a vision to move our wonderful community into the future. An example is the harbor project going on, the Gilbert Butler property, Think About, our town offices, but these are all transactions. I would like to create a vision of how we can have a library, community center, town office, harbor, all connected to beautify our town while retaining our iconic fishing village. Another example is the recent town office landscaping project. We have a premier fire department and a great EMT group, but the building appearance was not at the same level. Now we have a very inviting environment. Being on the Budget Committee, we have to ask, can we afford any of this? While the town office was funded by donations, no dollar was out of the town budget, and I believe we need to do things like that to really get away from always using the town coffers. My background includes education in math, economics, and finance. Ultimately, I had an MBA for finance in University of Wisconsin. Excuse me. I was in industry for 20 years. I was a leader of distribution for General Mills, and I was their head of IT. Following General Mills, I was a senior partner in Deloitte Consulting. I've been all over the world with companies like Bear, Monsanto, Nestle, J&amp;J, Coca-Cola, many others, and I believe I can bring my skills and experience to South Thomaston as we move into the future. Thank you very much for considering me. And my name is R-E-T-Z-L-A-F-F, Cliff.
I would like to address the body in regards to this article. This is Article Number 2, to elect a person to serve on the Select Board. Okay. Do we have somebody else? I'm not... Yes, the person in the back.
Hi, my name is Mike.
Would you come down front, sir, because we're going to have a great deal of difficulty hearing you.
Hi, my name is Mike Florence, and I would like to recommend John Spear for the job. His wealth of experience is enough of a recommendation. I served with him as a selectman myself, and he did a great job.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other comments in regards to this article? Would you come down front, please? If there's anybody else that would like to speak, please come down front. Ms. Paddock.
I'm Moira Paddock. My address is 18 Alsack Farm Road in South Thomaston. You have two great candidates tonight, and it's good to see that, but it would be nice to have new blood on the Board, and so I'm recommending Cliff Ratzloff because we've had certain people that have rotated out, rotated in. John's a wealth of information, but it would be nice to have new people with new vision. I'm totally impressed with what was done for the frontage of the town office, what they did with donations and volunteers, very impressive. Cliff was a great member of the Budget Committee this year. He asked great questions, and I think it's good to get new blood on the Select Board and have new people with new ideas. So that's what I want to plug for you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to address Article Number 2? Okay, now, we're going to do voting. Now, did everybody receive their ballot for the second article? Everybody has it? Okay, it's a light green. Okay, now, we're going to ask that the people come down to vote in line, and we're going to go with the line down here that goes from the front all the way to, no, just the one row, to come down and put your ballots in the ballot box.
And if there is anyone that has difficulty walking, please wave, and I can come and collect your ballot that way, but right in the box right out front.
Thank you.
Article Number 3 reads, "To elect by written ballot one member of the Board of Directors of the Regional School Unit Number 13 for a term until the town meeting of 2023." Now, does anybody have any comments or remarks in regards to Article Number 3? Okay, does... Oh, yes, sir.
Just a comment before we move on. I want to emphasize how important this position is. I think most of you realize that the biggest part of your tax dollars and mine go toward our school budget. It's huge. It's the largest percentage and one that, right now, we have not had representation on that board. So I just want to mention that, that this is really critical, and hopefully this lady standing is interested. So I'll give up the microphone.
My name is Lisa Mallett. I live at 97 Elm Street, and I'm actually here to put forward another name, Laine Sturtevant, who I think would be an excellent candidate for School Board. So if Laine wants to come forward.
Hi, everyone. My name is Laine Sturtevant. I also live at 97 Elm Street. I had my roommate nominate me, so thank you for that, Lisa. And I would like to put forward my name as a write-in candidate for the RSU 13 School Board. I've been thinking about this for a while now, and when I saw the announcement that they needed candidates, I figured it was a good time to step forward. I have worked at New Hope for Women as a youth prevention educator in the school district, and I've also worked at OutMain as a youth engagement coordinator, also with the multiple school districts in the midcoast, but RSU 13 included. So I've done work with the educators and students in the different schools in RSU 13. So I'm really passionate about helping make sure that that public education continues and that it continues through this critical moment right now. Thanks. Laine Sturtevant, L-A-N-E, Sturtevant, S-T-U-R-T-E-V-A-N-T. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to make any remarks in regards to this? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Hoydonk. I live at 56 Village Road in Sprucehead. I worked for Rockland School Systems for 22 years. I worked in the state of New Jersey for six years as an educator, and I really would like to fight for the state to start paying what they're supposed to be paying us towards school expenses, and therefore I'd like to be nominated for the School Board. Thank you.
Would you say your name again, please?
Thank you.
Remind people, under State of Maine law, voter intent is the way we judge a ballot. So the spelling does not have to be exact. It doesn't have to be, you know, really written in fine penmanship. We just have to get, be able to determine the voter's intent. So it's good you're spelling your names, but people don't have to remember them exactly. Is there anybody else that would like to address us? Yes, sir.
I would go by Y-O-N.
Pardon me?
I would also go by Y-O-N.
Is there anybody else who would like to address us in regards to Article Number 3? Okay, we're now going to have the voting on Article Number 3. Is the ballot box empty?
It is.
Well, that's a good place to start. Okay. We're now going to try this a little bit different. We're going to start with this row over here, and when I come over, what we would like is for this side of the room, these two rows right here, filed out front, go by the ballot box. Stand up now and sign quickly.
So the votes are in for the position of select person assessor and overseer of the poor for a term of three years, and John Spear has been elected to that position with 40 votes.
Okay, there's been a request to hear the complete results.
Certainly. John Spear, 40 votes cast. Cliff Ratzloff, 35 votes cast. Brooke Payne, 1 vote cast.
Thank you. Now, they're going to proceed to count the ballots for Article Number 3, and we're going to proceed with Article Number 4, and they will let me know when they have the results. Article 4, "To see if the town will vote to authorize payment to the Select Board Members and the Assessors quarterly." Is there a motion in regards to Article Number 4?
No.
Thank you. Is there a second? Article 4 has been moved and seconded. It is now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article Number 4? All those in favor of Article 4 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Article 4 has passage. Article 5.
We traditionally seek the incoming selectmen right now, swear them in.
Okay, I've just been informed that we would... that there's been a request to swear in the incoming select person right at this point. I would ask that Representative, former Representative Spear come forward to be sworn in. Is John still here?
Yeah.
Oh, there he is. Okay.
I didn't realize you did that.
Hi, John.
And Chair. Yeah. Okay, all right.
John Spear, will you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as you continue a citizen thereof?
I do.
And do you, John Spear, swear that you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent upon you as selectman, assessor, and overseer of the poor for a term of three years according to the Constitutions and laws of this state?
I do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, now, do we have the votes counted yet?
No.
No, you don't. Okay. We'll now go on with Article Number 5. "Shall an ordinance entitled 'An Ordinance Amending the George's River Regional Shellfish Management Ordinance for the Towns of Cushing, South Thomaston, St. George, Thomaston, and Warren' be enacted?" The amendment is to Section 17 of the ordinance, which would now include, "L, misconduct. Anyone who is rude or threatening to the town administration shall have their GRRSM Shellfish License suspended for one month for the first offense and one year for the second offense." Is there a motion in regards to Article Number 5?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Article 5 has been moved and seconded. It is now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article Number 5? All those in favor of Article 5 having passage, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Article 5 has passage. Article 6, "Shall an ordinance..." I'm fogged up again. "Shall an ordinance entitled 'March 2020 Amendments to the Town of South Thomaston Land Use Ordinance' be enacted? Copies of the amendments will be available at the town office and at the meeting." Is there a motion in regards to Article Number 6?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Article 6 has been moved and seconded. It is now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 6? Yes, sir. Oh, yes, ma'am. Please, would you like to come down front? Anybody else who would like to speak to Article 6, please come down front.
Moira Paddock, 18 Alsack Farm Road. Could someone explain what changed in this ordinance? Because I went yesterday, sent my husband to get copies. We didn't get it, so we had to go again today to get copies, and I got home late from work, and I haven't had time to read it, so I'd like a quick synopsis of what changed in this or what's new so that I can vote appropriately. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Northgrass will address us on this.
Almost all of the changes were formatting. We took the portion that had the... at the beginning of the ordinance, it listed all the changes for the last 50 years, and we put that at the back instead of in the front, so when you open it up, you're reading the current. We made a lot of grammatical changes. About the only significant change that changed anything at all was in the shoreland zoning ordinance, it gives you 35 feet for the height of a residential building. Our land use ordinance said 34 feet, so we made it 35 to match. But pretty much the rest of it is laying out authorities for the town to make attachments to it. Very few actual changes. Next year, we plan to have more, so if anybody is interested in making real changes to the land use ordinance, please see us, because we need people to come to the committee meetings and help us come up with how to change it.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 6? Okay, we ready for Article 6? All those in favor, signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Okay, the moderator would rule that the ordinance has passed. We now go to Article Number 7, "To see if the town will approve the creation of a reserve account entitled Owl's Head, South Thomaston, Thomaston Transfer Station Renovation Reserve Intended for Transfer Station Improvements and Initially Funded Through a Transfer of $153,479, which the town received due to its withdrawal from the Municipal Review Committee." Now, the Select Board and Budget Committee recommends this, so it does not have to be moved and seconded from the floor. It is now on the floor for discussion. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article Number 7? Okay, and I have been negligent in not asking if the people in the back of the room can hear me. It's... you can hear me good enough? Okay. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article Number 7? All those in favor of Article 7 having passage, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Article 7 has passage. Article 8, "To see what sums of money the town will vote to raise or appropriate for general government and how the same shall be raised." Now, we have a number of different sections here, and in your town budget, they are lines 13 through 19 of the proposed 2020 budget, and you look on the next page, and you will see the rest of the expenditures. The headlines are Administration, and then we have... The headlines are Administration, and then we have, if we turn the page, the Assessors, the Planning Board and Appeals, the Building and Grounds, the Town Landing, and the Code Enforcement Officer. These are your administrative functions, and the expenditure for each one is written down, as well as a brief description of how they will be funded. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number eight? I'll give you a minute to look at it. I should have said a moment to look at it. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article eight? Yes, sir.
If you go up back, Arthur, that one was, and was the draft pre-COVID. We have the post-COVID warrants up back.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number eight? All those in favor of Article eight having passage, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. The chair would rule that Article eight has passage. Article nine, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise or appropriate for public safety and how the same shall be raised. And you need to see lines 20 through 24 of the proposed 2020 budget. Again, we have headings here. We have the expenses under the Fire Department. And then if you look on the next page, we have where this will come from. And that is Article number, excuse me. These aren't in order. Okay, no, I haven't. After the Fire Department, we have the ambulance service. We have general public safety, and we have streetlights. Each one of these shows how much is going to be expended, proposed for expended under these individual items, and gives you some breakdown. So under this one, we have the Fire Department, the ambulance service, the general public safety, and the streetlights. Now, these are all recommended by the Select Board and the Budget Committee. Therefore, they are on the floor. They do not need to be moved and seconded from the floor. Now, do we have any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number nine? All those in favor of Article nine having passage, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. The chair would rule that Article nine does have passage. Article 10, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise or appropriate for public works and how the same shall be raised. Now, again, this is line 26 of the proposed 2020 budget. This is under Public Works, and you have the total of $287,278. This is recommended by both the Select Board and the Budget Committee. Therefore, it does not need to be moved and seconded, and is on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 10? Yes, way in the back, sir. Would you like to come down front and speak to us?
I think I can allow.
Okay.
Rich, it's primarily for the recording. Thank you very much.
If anybody else also wishes to speak on this article, please come down and stand behind this gentleman.
Richard Norman, 33 Westbrook Street. Question I have is, does the Public Works budget include the snow removal?
Okay, the gentleman's question is, does the Public Works Department budget include snow removal? Who would like to respond to that?
It does.
Okay, and did you hear the answer? It does.
I did. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 10? Oh, yes, John.
Can you hear me? It's okay. It's my understanding that the match requirement for the Island Road project is within this budget. Am I correct in that assumption?
Okay, I wasn't quite clear of the question. Would you repeat it again, please?
There is a, as I understand it, the town is in line to receive a grant to do some reconstruction work on the Island Road, Swiss Head Island Road. And my understanding is a match requirement. And I believe, I was told that that is in the Public Works budget. And I just want to confirm that.
No, the, we have two grants. $330,000 from Northern Borders and $10,000 from Island Institute. That was revenue, not spending. And the budget only accounts for spending. So the spending part of the Island Road is comprised of $15,000 from the Emergency Management Reserve, $46,000 from the paging Reserve, and 36, the difference between those two, and 61 by appropriation.
So the $46,000 that is listed in the budget, that I budget the back of detail, the...
That says paving.
Right, under paving, that is the town's match. Is that correct?
That's, well, it's, it's not quite a match. It's, the, the project is $420,000.
Yeah. I wasn't applying, it was a 50-50 match. I'm just...
Right.
Okay.
It's our contribution to the, to the total.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 10? All those in favor of Article 10 having passage, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your card. The chair would rule Article 10 has passage. Do you have the vote count ready?
Oh, yeah.
I've been informed, we have the vote count ready on the school board member. Would you please read the results?
I will. So the member of the Board of Directors for RSC 13 has been elected, and that is Lane Sturdivant. And I would be happy to read the rest of the votes, if that's appropriate. Lane Sturdivant has been elected with 53 votes. Adrian Huidonk received 17 votes. Moira Paddock received one vote, and Lisa Millet also received one vote.
Now, we go to Article number 11. To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise or appropriate for health and sanitation and how same shall be raised. You'd need to see the line 27 of the proposed 2020 budget. And again, down below, we have the health and sanitation. And this is recommended by both the Select Board and the Budget Committee. Therefore, it is considered to be moved and seconded, and it's on the floor for discussion. Are there any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 11? Oh, okay. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 11? All those in favor of Article 11 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Article 11 has passage. Article 12, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise or appropriate for general assistance and how the same shall be raised. And we have a recommendation of, on, I, on the next page, by appropriation, of $1,500. This is recommended by both the Select Board and the Budget Committee. Therefore, it is considered moved and seconded. It's now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 12? All those in favor of Article 12 having passage, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Article 12 has passage. Article 13, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise or appropriate for cultural and recreation and how the same shall be raised. Again, this is lines 29 through 31 of the proposed 2020 budget. Down below, we have the two items that are covered, which is the library and recreation. These amounts are both recommended by the Select Board and the Budget Committee. Therefore, they're considered moved and seconded, and they're on the floor for discussion. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 31? Okay, I see a couple of hands in the back. Would you folks come down front and address us? Was there another hand in, yes. Would you come down too, sir, and address us? Ms. Paddock.
Moira Paddock, 18 Alsack Farm Road. In the Budget Committee, we had a lot of discussion on recreation. And I voted against resealing the tennis court. Sorry, Rich, but with this year being the way it is, I felt it was inappropriate to spend that type of money to do the resurfacing, and I am again voicing that concern. I'm also voicing the concern that when we had a meeting with the Budget Committee on May 5th, there were several members of the Budget Committee that wanted to decrease the budget, but not enough were in favor. And so I am concerned with COVID-19, all the issues that are happening. And yes, when we made this budget in January, we, things were going quite well. It's a different world today. We have a lot of people out of, out of work. And I am concerned with the amount this budget is. And so even though this was done in January, we agreed, I'm voicing concern that this budget should, should be cut. And I'll start with that we really shouldn't spend, I think it's like $10,000 for resurfacing. There was a apply for a grant. But that is my concern, and I'm voting no on this. Thank you.
Do you wish to make a, a proposed amendment, or you're just urging a no vote on the whole article?
I'm urging a no vote on this article.
Okay, the entire article?
Just recre, just recreation, so. I did, so I'll...
I think the moderator would move that the article is one thing.
I would then propose a motion that we strike $10,000 out of Recreation, line 31, out of the, out of Article, out of Article 13.
Okay, Ms. Paddock has made a motion to reduce Article 13 under Recreation by $10,000. Is there a second to her motion? Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Now, we are just talking about the motion to reduce Article 13 by $10,000 out of the Recreation line. We're not talking about the library. We're just talking about the recreation. Is there anybody that has any statements, or questions, or comments in regards to the proposed amendment? Okay, I've just been informed.
That there is, under, the main moderator's manner?
Seconded, there's no further discussion. Oh, no, I'm, sorry.
Does anybody else have any comments? I noticed there was a gentleman right there. Yes, sir, and then I'll go to you. Pardon me? Oh, but it was a gentleman behind you.
Yeah, Adrian from Island Village Road. I'd just like to know if anybody noticed that there is an increase in the use of the tennis court because of the virus thing? I mean, you can't go nowhere else, so.
Okay.
That's all.
Now, sir, if I understood you correctly, your question is about the use of the tennis courts lately?
Is the tennis court use increased from what it used to be?
Okay. Is, does anybody feel qualified to respond to that? Yes, sir.
Well, you know, somebody that has used the tennis courts when it was usable, it's unusable right now, all right? Because it's in such disrepair.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to the proposed amendment? Yes, miss?
I, I would point out that the tennis courts were built with a grant, and there's a grant obligation for us to maintain them, if not this year, next year, last year. But eventually, we have to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Northgraves. Now, we have several other people. Yes, sir.
Just ask the town administrator to catch us up on the status of the grant that is associated with the tennis courts as well, if any change.
So to the first question about use by Mr. Huidonk, since COVID-19, we have observed, I work at the town office, and the tennis and basketball courts are directly behind us. There has been an increase in usage since COVID-19. And we have a draft grant application for a matching grant to resurface those. What we're asking for is half of that, and the land and water conservation, if they give us the grant, would cover the other half. So we have that grant completed. The one thing we were waiting on before submitting it, because there was an extension given, was finding out if there was passage of the matching funds, because we become more competitive if the town has approved the grant match.
Thank you. Now, we have several people. I'm going to go to the gentleman over here, and then I'll go to you, ma'am. Mr. Spear, did you want to?
Well, actually, yes. Owen, I have a question and a comment. Owen, I think partially answered my question. My question was, is the grant contingent upon the town match? My understanding is, from what you just said, it's not contingent, but it makes us more competitive. Is that accurate?
They might award the grant, but not give us the money until we come up. Grants have certain periods of time of which we can, you know, we're eligible for those funds. And so if awarded the grant, we could not action it until the town came up with their share.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The lady?
Oh, we, does that answer?
I have a question and a comment. And my comment is, I, I was going to also pair what Jeff said about the, the obligation that we signed on to several years ago to maintain that. But, but in, in that vein, I look at surfacing, kind of like re-roofing. And if you don't re-roof, then all of a sudden, everything underneath it is going downhill. So I would, I would urge that we maintain this as recommended by the Selectment and the Budget Committee.
Okay, thank you. Now, the lady who's standing up, please. Would you like to come down to the mic, or?
No, I'm fine. I think I'm loud enough.
Okay.
Sandy Retzloff, 28, Wright. I just want to say that the tennis courts, I've seen a lot of use on the tennis courts. And I support maintaining them to the point of safety. Right now, there's a, a big fence that's leaning. And if I, you know, kids were playing in there, if that fence, a tall fence about, I don't know, 12 or 16 feet high, if that fence came down, and it's coming out of the goal, the post, it could be quite dangerous. So, you know, I would encourage the Select Board to maintain it to the level of safety. And whether that be the flooring, the, the, or, or close it down so that nobody gets hurt. I, I see that fences, kids climbing on that, it can come down. So I would make that recommendation that we have at least a minimum amount of dollars to, to keep it safe and to just keep it open.
Okay, thank you. Now, we're talking here just about the amendment under this article. Okay, now, does anybody else have any further questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Yes, I have one com, hello, can you hear me? I have one comment about this amendment, but unfortunately, I'm probably going to stretch it. I agree with Maura that this, we've got to take a stand somewhere. The Budget Committee did a great job, in my opinion, through January. Came up with a great budget. However, then the pandemic struck, and the budget we're agreeing to is way too high for this community for a pandemic. I, we don't really have the numbers the way they're displayed to this group. I think there needs to be a little more transparency. Tell us what the budget is going up, because our head is going down. And I believe our budget is going up 10%. That's the way we were when we were in the budget process. So I think that there, we need to take a stand somewhere of saying we can't spend money, because there is no more money.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to the proposed amendment to Article 13? Yes, ma'am.
Penny Allen, Director of Libraries and Overseer of the Cemetery. And I would like to forego my stipends and put that money into the tennis courts. We need repair them. It came up at last year's meeting. That $10,000 is a drop in the bucket, so put my $1,600 into it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments, questions, or remarks in regards to the proposed amendment to Article 13? Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, Penny, Penny reminds me, those that were at the town meeting last year that we had at Ash Point might recall that this issue became a pretty hot-button issue amongst the folks at the, at the meeting. Candidly, it surprised the Select Board, because we hadn't heard anything about it all year. But when Rich brought it up, and the community started talking about it, there certainly was a... about it, there certainly was a groundswell of interest in bringing those tennis courts, basketball courts, back up to speed. It caused me to reflect over my last, now, five years as a Selectman, and look back at the recreation budget. We haven't really invested much in recreation in this community for some time, certainly not on an annual upkeep basis. And as a result, this feels like a big chunk, because, as John said, we didn't do the periodic maintenance that kind of kept it up, so now we need a new roof. Well, in this case, it's a new overlayment of the courts. But if the indication, the increase of use that we've seen due to COVID, and in particularly the skate park where the kids have been, you know, there's been a lot of activity down there over the last, particularly over the last three months, and I think that, you know, at some point, we need to make this investment. If we can get a $10,000 grant to help offset it, now is the time. I mean, I hear the comments about COVID, and things are tight, but I believe that the Budget Committee and the Select Board spent a lot of time and effort and scrutiny in this, and I think it's an investment in ourselves, in this case, in this community.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'd like to address the transparency question. The year, this budget is a 15.69% increase year over year, and on top of that, that does not factor in the $31,000 in addition that we will incur if and when the RSU 13 budget passes. More importantly, from my standpoint, is that the mill rate, which this year is $14 per thousand, is going to land somewhere between $15.90 and $16.20, depending upon how our town valuation comes in.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, yes, sir.
Again, Richard Norman. Part of the recreation budget includes money for the kids in South Thomiston who participate in the Rockland Little League. Now, I know this year, because of COVID, all right, there's, Little League, I believe, has been canceled, but I ask everybody to, you know, to vote this amendment down. We can't just throw recreation out the window here for the sake of, how much? $12,000? You know, the tennis courts need to be repaired. We spent, you know, they used to be the best tennis courts in Knox County. Now, they're pretty close to the worst, you know, so I'd really appreciate if everybody would vote the amendment down, and we support the recreation budget.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come up and address us?
Kate Rackliff, 44 Pleasant Beach Road. I just had a question as to if this passed, when the maintenance would happen? Would it be something that happens this summer, or is it something that would need to be put off?
Okay, the lady's question is, if this article passes, when would this maintenance be done? Does anybody want to address that? Yes?
Like I said, the land and water conservation grant application did get pushed back. The total amount to do the resealing for both basketball and tennis courts requires both the approval of this and the grant, and so if we get the grant, and if this passes, which would make us more competitive, we would try to have construction be done at the remainder of this year, probably fall. If for some reason that wasn't able to happen because of the time delay and pushing it back with COVID, we might ask to encumber the monies that are approved tonight, if they were to do it as soon in 2021 as we could. But the grant, if awarded, is eligible for a longer period of time.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to the proposed amendment to Article number 13? Okay, we're ready for the question. Now, we're just talking here about the proposed amendment, and I will try to summarize, and Ms. Paddock, let me know if I've got this correct, that your proposed amendment here is to reduce the recreation budget, or reduce Article 13 by $10,000. Is that correct, Ms. Paddock?
Correct.
Okay. Now, we're going to have the vote on the proposed amendment. All those in favor of the proposed amendment, please signify by raising your cards. Okay, all those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. The chair would rule that the proposed amendment has been defeated. We will now go to Article 13 as originally written. Any further discussion, questions, or comments in regards to Article 13? All those in favor? Oh, yes, sir?
Paul Duda, Dublin Road. If the grant isn't awarded, what happens to the funds?
Okay. If the grant is not awarded, I would look to the Select Board for guidance. We have a couple of options. We could, again, attempt to encumber those monies and reapply for it, or I could work with the Select Board and see what work could be done without the grant, to try to stave off. What the grant is, is a full resurfacing. We could do crack maintenance at a lower cost, which, and then we would look to further improvements in the future. But yes, if they approve, if you all approve this tonight, but we don't get the grant, we'll try to do some maintenance and make sure that it doesn't get any worse.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, comments, or remarks? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I think the more likely outcome is that the amount of the budget, which is intended for the resurfacing and the maintenance of the tennis courts, doesn't get spent, which means that it shows up in, at the end of the year, in surplus. And then in January, the combination of the Select Board and the Budget Committee would sit down and meet again and decide if there was a grant, and if we were going to spend the funds, and we would, in terms of the funding mechanism, the practice would be to allocate surplus, because it was unspent for that purpose last year. So, we've taxed ourselves for that $10,000, and then we'd reallocate it. That's the most likely outcome, but at least one more of my colleagues and six Budget Committee members would have to agree with that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 13? All those in favor of Article 13 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Article 13 has passage. Article 14, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise or appropriate for debt services, and how the same shall be raised." Now, and again, this is line 33 of the proposed budget. This is recommended by both the Select Board and the Budget Committee. Therefore, it's considered moved and seconded, and it's on the floor. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 14? Okay, are we ready for the vote? All those in favor of Article 14, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your card. The chair would rule that Article 13, excuse me, Article 14 has passage. Now, go to, yes, sir?
Just to, again, I just want to make sure that people understand that there are two components to the debt service. One is the, we continue to pay the loan for the renovation to the town office from a few years ago. And secondly, you might recall that we had a special town meeting last fall, in which we voted to borrow from ourselves, if you will, to fund the new ambulance. And so, we have a five-year schedule of payback from, to the reserve funds to pay for, to replenish the reserve funds that we used to purchase the ambulance, and that is reflected in the debt service.
Okay, thank you. We're now on Article 15. It says, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise or appropriate from reserve funds, and how the same shall be raised." Now, this is, you need to see line 34 of the proposed budget. And again, we have a list of the reserve funds, which consist of the truck reserve, the ambulance reserve, and then we have the fire SCBA reserve, we have the cemetery reserve, and we have the transfer station reserve. These have all been recommended by the Budget Committee and the Select Board. Therefore, they are considered moved and seconded, and they're on the floor for discussion. Do we have any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 15? All those in favor of Article 15 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Article 15 has passage. Article 16.
Okay, yes? Okay, you'll notice that the last one of those lines is the 153,479, which you voted to create the reserve account for earlier. That's for the transfer station renovation. And just so you know, the three towns are about to receive a letter from the Treasurer of the Transfer Station Board, who happens to be me, asking for the first $103,000 of these funds. Our share is 26.3%, and that's to replace the four compactors, which are failing at a rapid rate.
Okay, thank you. We now go to Article 16. Article 16 says, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise or appropriate for cemetery, GRSF veterans, and how the same shall be raised." This is line 35 of the proposed 2020 budget, and you see the breakdown. Is there a motion in regards to Article number 16? Okay, is there a second? Okay, Article 16 has been moved and seconded. It's now on the floor for discussion. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 16? All those in favor of Article 16 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Article 16 has passage. Article 17, "To see if the town will authorize the Select Board to negotiate and sign a loan agreement," I'm getting foggy here, "for an amount not to exceed $38,000, and under terms of which they deem advisable, to purchase and transition the streetlight infrastructure from which the town is responsible, to energy-efficient LED lighting." Now, below here, we have a financial statement about the town, and if you continue on, that's it. This is a financial statement from the Treasurer of the Town of South Thomiston, Maine. Are there any questions, comments, or remarks? Yes?
The person over there on?
Yeah.
What is the benefit of buying these?
Okay, the lady's question is, what is the benefit of this LED lighting system?
What is the benefit of us purchasing them instead of continuing leases?
Okay. Would somebody like to respond to that? Okay.
So, the bulk of what we pay CMP every month for the streetlight infrastructure is the leasing of the items, basically the pole space. So, I think it's roughly three-quarters of the amount that we pay to CMP every month for our streetlights goes towards leasing. So, we would purchase basically the lease rights and the hardware itself. The hardware isn't very valuable. We pay minimal for that. The bulk of the buyback agreement is purchasing the leased space. The benefit for the town is that we would then install energy-efficient LED lights. Pause there for a second. The PUC is working. The way that streetlights currently work is you're basically assessed a amount of energy usage, regardless of what you actually use that or not. These streetlights would have what are called smart controls, which actually tell us how many kilowatts and kilowatt-hours we've consumed. So, the hope is that the PUC does a new tariff agreement, which allows us to pay only for what we consume. I'm not entirely sure if CMP, if they are going to install LED lights, if they're going to do smart controls. So, we would also, with the smart controls, be able to adjust the lighting throughout town to be more appropriate, both for time of year, and what we're hoping to get out from any glare or things of that nature. You can go so far as to adjust based on a full moon and weather conditions if you wanted to. So, at the end of this six years, we would have used the cost savings from the lease that we pay to CMP to pay off this loan. So, we have not increased the streetlight budget. We actually decreased the streetlight budget slightly, and we would use the cost savings to pay off the loan. And so, at the end of six years, we would own this infrastructure. We anticipate not having to do much in the way of maintenance. They are under warranty for 10 years, and then at that point in time, we would take over maintenance. So, we would also not then have to rely on CMP if there was an outage. The controller of the smart controls would be notified. If there's an outage, we would be working with the local contractor firm to then replace that. This entire project has been done in conjunction with six other Knox County towns. We're doing it under kind of a bulk purchase agreement. Everyone's purchasing the same equipment, so if for some reason we're out of stock in a light that goes down, we could go to, say, Rockland or Thomiston, change that out, and get your light fixed. I know that the folks, I think it's over at Iron Tree, have been waiting for some time. I notified CMP myself that that light needs to be changed out. CMP is not, the way that their system works, aware when a light is out, but they're still charging us for it. So, even though we've asked them to change out streetlights in town, they haven't. So, we save money on the energy. We do the right thing by the planet. We own these items after six years. We pay them back with cost savings from not paying CMP lease monies, and we build out a bit of a Knox County collaboration to have a better infrastructure. Does that answer your question, Terry?
Did you talk to CMP at all to see what sort of options they were offering to change out the LED lights?
So, I've had some very light conversations with CMP. The, my understanding, anyway, of what they would offer, it would still be their maintenance program. We would still pay them lease amounts. What we would get at the end of the day would be better energy-efficient lighting, that we're not entirely sure whether or not we would actually see a cost savings to that. There would be a hope and an assumption that we would, but no. Based on the assessment of five or six other professional administrators and managers throughout Knox County that are all doing the same thing, this seems like a very smart and wise decision for the town. My recommendation, anyway.
Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Um, sort of.
Okay. Now, we have several people who would like to speak. I'd like to go to the lady at the microphone.
Hi, Ruth Rinklin, 18 Spruce Point. Pardon my ignorance, but I don't understand what the financial statement has to do with Article 17.
We're required, we're required, when we ask for borrowing, to issue a statement to the town of our current indebtedness.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards? Yes, sir?
Yeah, Terry, I'd just like to add a little more dollar figures to what Owen had said. I've got them in front of me. There's several reasons, I think, to do this. One is obviously the new technology, which is much more energy-efficient. In just in energy consumption, before the upgrade, we spend about $19,622 for energy, and afterwards, we'd spend about $6,727. So, we would cut our energy costs by about 66%. The overall payback on this, not only are we able to pay for it with the savings, but at the end of 20 years, this project will have saved the town estimated $146,810.
But can you get the same lights, 36,000, without borrowing $38,000?
I don't know if you could hear that. She's asking if we could get the same lights from CMP. We probably could, to answer that question. We probably could, to answer that question. We haven't asked them. But as Owen said, that would give us the energy consumption savings, I would assume. But we also pay lighting equipment charges, which I'm assuming CMP would still want, of $6,000 a year. We spend delivery charges from CMP of $1,176 a year. And then, we have something called supply charges from CMP, which is $1,400 a year. So, the cost associated is more than energy with them. Now, you could say, okay, you're going to now pay maintenance costs if you go and own the product yourself. And I would grant you that that's unknown to us. But a 10-year warranty on LED, and I think many of us have LED lighting in our houses. And clearly, the maintenance related to LED lighting is significantly lower than the kind of lighting we're using now. So, I think there's a risk involved, granted. But I think overall, the town should see a significant savings from this move.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Spear? And then the gentleman in the back?
What... I haven't been deeply involved in this. But what concerns me as a little bit of a wild card is the maintenance costs. And I'm not talking about replacing bulbs. I'm talking about if lights get shot out or if there's an automobile accident and a pole comes down. Have we looked into insurance and what impact that would have? And what insurance would cover? Would it cover vandalism and things of that nature?
So, just recently, May Municipal Association had added has added streetlight insurance. It's a new thing that they've been adding. We hadn't historically had it yet.
I'm trying to predict.
So, the answer is yes. Newly added to our insurance policy is the question about streetlights because we did not currently own them when we filled it out. I had to mark no. But that is an option that we have going forward. And I already discussed it with our insurance provider that if we move forward on the project, it would be covered. So, not only do the lights have a warranty, but they'd be covered under our insurance.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 17? All those in favor of Article 17 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Article 17 has passage. We'll now move to Article 18. "To see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit of $637,630 established for the town of South Thomaston by state law in the event that the municipal budget approved under the preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than the current property tax level limit." This article to be discussed needs to be moved and seconded. Would somebody move the Article 18? Okay, is there a second? Okay, thank you. Article 18 is now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks? Now, we have a couple people. Mr. Northgraves.
Just to remind everybody, like in previous years, we have not added anything to the budget. The budget is currently below the tax levy limit. So, I urge everybody to vote no on this particular article.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 18? Okay, we're now going to go to the vote. All those in favor of Article 18 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. All those opposed to Article 18 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. The chair would move that Article 18 has been defeated. Article 19, "To see if the town will authorize the select board to utilize surplus funds to reduce the amount of funds raised at the annual town meeting." Is there a motion on Article number 19? Is there a second? Okay, Article 19's been moved and seconded. It's now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 19? Yes, Penny?
I think this is the rainy day to use some of the surplus we have. This year is a rainy day. And the surplus is there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 19? All those in favor... Oh.
Point is well taken. Or well expressed. But the overall surplus was just reduced by $153,000. So, the actual balance right now is the lowest that it's been, at least since I've been on the select board. So, I do agree that this is a rainy day. I do agree we have to take a good, careful look at it. But just keep in mind that there's two sides to that coin right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks? Okay, we ready for the question? All those in favor of Article number 19 having passage, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. Okay, those in favor. Okay, now those opposed. Okay, Article 19 has passage. Article 20, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to appoint all town officials as necessary or required by law." Is there a motion in regards to Article 20? Is there a second? Article 20's been moved and seconded. It's now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 20? All those in favor of Article 20 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Article 20 has passage. Article 21, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town to sell and dispose of any real estate acquired by the town for non-payment of taxes thereon under such terms as it may deem advisable and to execute quitclaim deeds for such property." Is there a motion in regards to Article 21? Is there a second? Second, thank you. Article 21 has been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 21? Yes, sir.
Paul Duda, Dublin Road. What's currently now in place, it sounds like the town does not sell property that is used by foreclosure?
Okay, the gentleman... Your question is, is this a change?
Yeah.
No, this really isn't a change. This is something the town votes on each year. It allows us to do that. I don't, in my recent memory, I don't know that we have ever sold or taken custody of any property. It's come down to the wire a few times. But this just would allow us to do that if we ultimately took over property as a result of taxes.
Okay, yes. The gentleman in the back?
On that, are there any properties currently in foreclosure?
Okay, the gentleman's question, if I heard you correctly, are there any properties currently in foreclosure?
No. No, there are not.
Okay, Mr. Northgraves.
And I would add that this does not authorize the town to sell or not sell. It just says that the select board can do it on behalf of the town. It is regulated by state law on whether you sell or don't sell. And if we did have that case come up and this was not in there, the town would have to get together and vote on it instead of letting the select board decide that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 21? All those in favor of Article 21 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Article 21 has passage. Article 22, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town to accept gifts and certain funds that may be left to the town." Is there a motion in regards to Article 22? Is there a second? Okay, Article 22 has been moved and seconded. It's now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 22? All those in favor of Article 22 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Article 22 has passage. Article 23, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to accept or dispose of all equipment." Is there a motion in regards? Is there a second? Okay, Article 23 has been moved and seconded. It's now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 23? All those in favor of Article 23 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Article 23 has passage. Article 24, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to transfer funds from unexpended balances and surplus as it deems necessary." Is there a motion in regards to Article 24? Is there a second? Article 24 has been moved and seconded. It's now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 24? Yes, sir.
It seems rather vague. Can you... Somebody give me a little more information on that?
Okay, the gentleman's question, if I understood you correctly, is this seems rather vague and you'd like a little more information? Who wants to take a...
I will.
Okay.
For unexpended balances, kind of a classic case is, and I don't like to do expense and people-related costs. So, let's look at two expense categories. One gets underspent, the other's running over. We balance that out by moving the funds between those accounts. And we can move them across accounts and departments as well. The surplus one is vague. I've never liked it because I think it gives us more power than we should have. But I think the boards have been very conscientious. So, it's used surplus as we deem necessary. Penny brought it up a little while ago, that it's a rainy day. Maybe we use surplus to reduce the appropriation amount. The more likely occurrence that we're going to have this year is we're going to fall short on the revenue side and have to use surplus to account for that.
Thank you.
Because we do have to balance the budget by December 31st.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 24? All those in favor of Article 24 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Article 24 has passage. Article 25, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to suspend an amount not exceed one-quarter of the budget amount in each budget category of the prior year's annual budget during the period of January to the annual town meeting in March." Okay? Is there a motion? So, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Article 25 is now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 25? Yes, sir.
Can you put it in better terms?
Okay, would somebody else like to put this in better terms? Yes.
Yeah, easily said, I think, is that the town allows us to spend the money before you've approved the budget. That's a whole other... I could go on and tell you how out of cycle we are. But the bottom line is that our financial year starts January 1st, but we don't even vote on that budget until March. So, by the time you vote as a town, we've spent a quarter of the budget. And what this does is authorizes us to be legal and spend that money on your behalf.
And this year, it's even worse.
Yeah, this year is an exceptional year. We're obviously well into the year. And now, you're approving the budget that we've been spending for the last six months.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks? Yeah.
Just so everybody has a heads up, the board is going to take up the issue that actually cures this problem, which is to change our fiscal calendar to match the fiscal calendars of RSU 13 in the state. However, there are more than... There's more than one opinion in the town about doing that. So, stay tuned and participate in those discussions when we start to have them, please.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article number 25? All those in favor of Article 25 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Article 25 has passage. Article 26, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to make application for and execute any documents on behalf of the town related to federal, state, grant, or other funds, and to accept said funds if awarded and to authorize their expenditure." Is there a motion? Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, Article 26 has been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 26? All those in favor of Article 26 having passage, signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify. Thank you. Article 26 has passage. Article 27, "To see if the town will vote to accept the following method of collecting taxes. Taxes to become due October 1st, 2020, and interest rate of 8% per annum will be charged starting October 2nd of the current year. Request for abatements are to be made within 185 days of commitment." Is there a motion in regards to Article 27? Is there a second? Article 27 has been moved and seconded. Therefore, it's on the floor for discussion. Are there any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 27? Are there any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 27? Yes, ma'am?
Is 8 percent the standard? Is that what we've done these past years?
Okay, the lady's question is, is 8 percent the standard amount that the town charges?
No, the historical amount has been 7 percent. The state treasurer has granted everybody the ability to go to 8 percent this year. I guess they did it last year, and so, we're following along that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article 27? All those in favor of Article 27 having passage, please signify by raising your card. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your card. Okay, the chair would rule that Article 27 has passage. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to give a 1.5 percent discount on any portion of property taxes not yet committed, paid on or before June 1st of the current year. Is there a motion in regards to Article 28? Is there a second? Okay, Article 28's been moved and seconded. It's now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks? Yes, Penny?
Well, this is an increase for those of us who have prepaid, and this is retroactive. If it somehow happens that we have a surplus on our account, are you going to refund that amount, or what are you going to do?
Okay. I take it your question's basically how the town is going to handle this because this is a change in the amount that you pay on prepaid taxes. Is that, do I got the gist of it?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Does anybody want to?
It only gets a little complicated because it's the difference between a discount and a credit. If approved, that property will enjoy that discounted rate, but in a credit form.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article Number 28?
Any change, make that 8 percent as well?
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
There's a reason. I'll listen to that.
Pardon me? Okay.
Little chance, first of all. The one and a half percent is a change from prior years because it was 1 percent, and it's being raised to one and a half percent because that's our cost of money. So, we are giving the prepayment, the cost of money that we have. We get paid a one and a half percent interest on our various accounts at Machias. So, we're doing a break-even when you prepay your taxes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
So, if there's an overpayment, there won't be a refund, it will just go towards the next year?
Okay, the lady's question is, if there's an overpayment, there won't be a refund, it will just go towards next year's taxes? Is that your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, unless the individual reaches out and we can work with individual customers. If they request a refund, we'll take it on a case-by-case basis, but without communication directly from the property taxpayer, it will just go towards next year's taxes.
That answer your question, ma'am? Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions, remarks, or comments in regards to Article 28? All those in favor of Article 28 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. Article 28 has passage. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to set the interest rate to be paid by the town on abated taxes at a rate of 4 percent, and to authorize such interest paid or abatements granted to be appropriated from the overlay funds, or if necessary, from unassigned funds. Is there a motion in regards to Article 29?
Move.
Is there a second?
No.
Okay, Article 29's been moved and seconded. It's now on the floor for discussion. Any questions, comments, or remarks in regards to Article Number 29? All those in favor of Article 29 having passage, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards. Thank you. I want to thank everybody for your good civic behavior under somewhat adverse conditions, and I would, am going to find a way to get glasses that don't fog up, or follow Mrs. Paddock's suggestion and get a clear shield instead of this mask. The town meeting is now adjourned. Does anybody have any announcements? Yes, sir.
Yeah, just want to introduce, we have an intern for the summer who's going to be working on some road survey work. Michael, if you want to, look, you take your mask off so they can, just so they can see you. There you go.
Everyone, excited to hang on this project for a short time, but decided to be here and be working with everyone, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements people would like to make? I guess we're adjourned.